Being seven o'clock, thank you. We'll call the main to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
Okay, we're all here, thank you. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Last week, we lost one of our firemen paramedic, the passing of Mike Rader. So at this time, if we could just have a moment of silence in his memory. And at this time, I'd also like to call up our Fire Chief Scott Labonte, just to say a few words. I mean, if you hadn't had a chance to go to the funeral, the fireman's funeral ceremony was very impressive, very, very well organized and well done, thank you.
Thank you very much. Right from the start, once we spoke to Mike's family about the arrangements that, you know, they'd like to have for Mike's services, both visitation and the funeral, we decided that, you know, we were gonna make it right. We wanted to do it perfect, or as well as we could, all the way through. But the past week or so has been quite somber with the loss of our brother in arms. Just like to take a moment or two, just like I mentioned already, to say that the goal that's been set by your fire department to give Mike Rader a well-deserved and honorable memorial has been achieved. From the moment word was received of Mike's passing, offers for assistance poured in from all over the state of Michigan, as well as Canada, to make Mike's final transition home and thereafter as respectable as possible. Although Mike will remain in our hearts and minds long after today, we as emergency responders are beginning to carry on the most difficult tradition of all, that's moving forward. With all the time, devotion, and attention to detail which was demonstrated by our firefighting personnel this past week to honor our fallen, it can easily be said that in my 18 years with this department, regardless of rank, I've never been so proud to say that I'm a member of the Sioux-St. Marie Fire Department. I just want to take a few moments to thank some specific people, as well as some groups of people who made this past week as special as it was. First of all, East Lansing firefighter and Honor Guard Commander Mike Connell came up from East Lansing to train us how to properly set up an Honor Guard, which was fantastic. There's so many steps to it, it's unbelievable, and our guys had it down with his training, and he did that all in his own time. We also had U.S. Army Staff Sergeant and National Honor Guard Director TJ Malport come over here from Marquette, who taught the guys how to properly unfold and refold the flag, which, again, was amazing. Also, Steve Ball and Nate McCurty from the Traverse City Fire Department, as well as Sean O'Dwyer from Dearborn Fire Department for assisting with Honor Guard details, Chris Green for preparing our apparatus bountings and light covers for all of our trucks. Special thank you to the Sioux-St. Marie Police Department for being at our side the entire time at all the visitations and funeral and Honor Guard duties. It was really neat to see, you know, we work together a lot, but, you know, they took that special step for us. Sioux Police Auxiliary for helping out with street closures, as well as parking for the funeral and the procession leading up to. Chippewa County Central Dispatch for all the assistance they gave us for doing the final call ceremony, as well as setting up fire coverage during the funeral services. Our very own Street Department for making sure that the parking areas were clear for the procession, and being a part of the procession itself, they put on quite a showing with all their apparatus, which is really nice. As well as Sioux Township Fire Department for standing by for us during the funeral and being a large part of both processions. As well as the many other fire departments, City of Flint Fire Department for setting up the procession from McLaren, Flint to the freeway just before Mike officially became an organ donor, which is a really neat thing. Mount Morris Fire Department, which is also downstate in Genesee County, for assisting with those services as well. On the ride back to the Sioux and bringing Mike home, Mackinac City Fire Department, St. Ignis Fire Department, Allied EMS out of St. Ignis, Kinross EMS and Fire Department, Pickford Fire Department and EMS, Bay Mills EMS, as well as Dafter Township. And also, I'd like to thank Bryce Tracy, if you know him from Mackinac City or Mackinac County area, in helping set that up. So there's a lot of players in this. It was a team effort all the way, and, you know, like I said, I'm proud to say that working with the department that I have is truly an honor. These guys really put a lot into everything they do.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Second item, I'd like to ask those with cell phones if they would please put them on vibrate or silence them, and by turning them off, we'd appreciate it. Item B, Proclamations and Recognitions, since our earner, we'll move to the public comment, item C. If there's anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item, if you'd like to tell us your name at this point, when we get to that item, we would recognize you, and you'll have three minutes to speak on that agenda item. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? In hearing them, we'll go to the Consent Agenda. Deputy City Manager.
Item one, under the Consent Agenda, is approval of City Commission meeting minutes of February 18th, 2019. Item two, acceptance of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of December 6th, 2018. Item three is approval of City assessing office policy and procedure for audits of personal property and real property exemptions. Item four, approval of a resolution to allow property owners to file a written request to grant P.R.E. with July-December border review. Item five is approval of a resolution supporting the restoration of state historic tax credits. Item six, first reading of proposed modifications to the employee handbook. Item seven is termination of a contract with Centerpoint Energy for the purchase of natural gas. And item eight is approval of the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there, Commissioner, that likes something further explained on the Consent Agenda? Commissioner Twardy.
This move that we approved the Consent Agenda.
Supported.
This move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item E, Special Orders of Business, one, adoption of goals for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present to the Commission the draft product from this year's annual Goal Setting Session. So as the Commission is aware, the Goal Setting Session, which happens annually, is a critical component of the overall visioning and management and administration of the city, has a significant impact on the budget, which is developed by city administration for review by the Commission, and it also shapes the day-to-day operations of city administration, once the goals are adopted by the City Commission. It's the time of year when new concepts, new ideas, new initiatives, and proposals come forth for review by the Commission. And as you're aware, this session was held on February 11th, and it ran from approximately 9:00 a.m. until 3:45 p.m. It was facilitated by Ms. Nancy Ole with the Community Advancement Network, and it had a significantly different structure from Goal Setting Sessions in years past, with the modifications being based on Commission and team buy-in and research from approximately 20 other communities throughout the United States. So throughout the day, the City Commission took various actions, established legislative priorities, reviewed the 2020 Vision Statement, received an update on the progress made towards existing goals, conducted an analysis of the city's strengths and weaknesses, as well as the external opportunities and threats, discussed and prioritized new goals, as well as those goals which exist currently, and restructured several goals into best practices. And as the Commission is aware, generally, goals are established under four broad categories: the categories of Administration, Economic Development, Infrastructure and Equipment, and lastly Recreation. And outside of those four categories, this year was the first time that a new category of best practices was established for those activities which exist in perpetuity and geared toward excellence in service from the city. So walking through the goals under Administration, the three on this page were previously existing goals which were reestablished: prioritizing resources to support and enhance public work services, pursuing the robust integration of the Coast Guard into the community, and focusing on the Police and Fire Pension Fund, as well as the MERS program. Also reestablished was focusing on an organization-wide implementation of the Citizen Service philosophy, and the new goal under the Administration category was establishing a new city visioning document through deliberate strategic planning and robust public input, and this document would serve to evolve the existing 2020 Vision Statement. Under the Economic Development category, two goals on the screen were reestablished: supporting LSSU and its students with its connectedness with the vitality and prosperity of the city, and continuing to improve downtown properties and exploring options to continue to free up Tax Increment Financing District 1 and 2 funds to support development in the downtown district. Also reestablished was the goal of stimulating and accommodating tourism through researching and establishing downtown restrooms, and the newly established goal under this category was actively planning for and supporting the construction of a new lock throughout the project lifecycle, which includes the preparation, execution, ambassadorship, and winding down components of the project. Under the Infrastructure and Equipment category, there were three goals. The first was reestablished to improve pedestrian safety, so that it's safe and convenient for children and their parents and guardians to walk to school, and two new goals, which were, by consensus, arrived at by the City Commission, first, to fund and procure a new ladder truck for the fire department, and to provide for the construction of a portable New Year's Eve ball drop apparatus to continue to facilitate downtown New Year's Eve festivities. And finally, under Recreation, a number of goals were reestablished, with I believe one new goal: reestablished to complete improvements at Anni Osborne Campground and the Sherman Park Campground, pursuing the construction of a walkway along the power canal, and integrating bicycle-friendly amenities and features into the transportation network of the city. Also reestablished were the goals of expanding resources dedicated for Malcolm Field, supporting the expanded use of all-terrain vehicles, and aggressively marketing parks facilities, including the Puller and Malcolm Park for expanded revenue opportunities. The new goal under this category was to advance construction of the waterfront non-motorized trail proposed for city-owned property between the wastewater treatment plant and Rotary Island Park. And as mentioned, the new category of best practices, a number of goals were moved into this area, ranging from divesting city-owned property to increasing the focus on safety for employees and the public, evaluating ordinances on a continuing basis, fostering a comprehensive, business-friendly climate, making visual improvements throughout the city, and continuing to establish and support outdoor recreational opportunities. And as mentioned, the impact of goal-setting is significant, shapes the day-to-day operations of the city, shapes the budget development process, and also represents the visions of the institution which Administration looks toward when planning internal initiatives and projects and prioritizing services. And also newly established goals, typically those that are just established through goal-setting, are considered throughout the budget development process but rigorously pursued after the budget is adopted by the City Commission, and covers the period running from July 1st, 2019, through June 30, 2020. And that concludes the update on the goals. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, City Managers. You're coming back to the dais. Just a comment, it was a very worthwhile day, and it was the first time that I can remember, and been involved in a lot of those, that the Commission actually helped the Administration with achieving the goals through the process of activities. So we each took a particular topic, and with the Administration also sat down and developed a timetable and activities to reach those goals. So very enlightening doing that, and certainly like to thank Nancy for her expertise, and certainly Oliver Turner, who found that individual for us. And it was a good activity, excellent. With that, Commissioner Talentino.
Sure, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year of 2019-2020 goals as presented.
Support.
This move's supported. Are there any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Item F, Communications, one, from the Economic Development Corporation, approval to release a request for proposals for a firm to market the city's industrial park property.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, EDC Executive Director Holt will present to the Commission and community.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Commission. Mayor, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, thank you for this few minutes here. We, the EDC is working hard to formulate a plan for the sale of available properties and our two industrial parks. You know, a while back, you might remember, we listed our airport park lots for sale, and we're in the process of doing that, and have had some interest. What we'd like to do is move this into Step Two or Phase Two, and that is to follow the same process for our industrial park on Easterday Avenue. We have six lots available, but two of them are very wet and are not suitable for development at this time. So that leaves four properties in the industrial park that have value. We've done the surveys, and we're ready to go with potential title work, and thank you to our city assessor, we've gotten the value of the lots, and we'll be use that as a guide for placing value on the property. Our plan, if approved, is to list the lots for sale this spring. We'll use the same RFP that's been reviewed by our city attorney, and we'll use that document for the RFP. Attached is a map for reference, and it's noted that several firms already located in the industrial park have expressed interest in some of the lots that are for sale and from their current locations. So hopefully, this might encourage them to move forward with that. The RFP will be shared by our local EUP Board of Realtors, the Michigan Association of Realtors, posted on our website, posted on the city's website, shared with M.DOT, Office of Airports, shared with the Michigan Association of Airport Executives, our Airport User List, the Fixed Base Operator Management List for Michigan Airports, the Economic Resource Alliance, and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We have met with Creed also on this, and they're in agreement with this as well.
City Manager, you have anything additionally?
Nothing further. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Gary.
Good job on this. I make the motion to approve the release of the request for proposals as presented with responses due back before 4:00 p.m. on March 29th, 2019.
Support.
This move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Item two, under Communications, is also from the Economic Development Corporation, approval of a budget revision for Smart Zone Infrastructure.
Okay, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, defer to Mr. Holt.
Thank you. We took over, the EDC took over the Smart Zone operation in July of 2016, and we were aware that the facility was not properly set up due to many issues for light manufacturing. We have been filling the building with new and expanding businesses, but without adding additional infrastructure that is necessary, it'll make things very difficult. Osprey Technologies, who has recently been picked as an award under the Smart Zone State Organization as one of the top firms in Michigan, out of 700 applicants, by the way, they'd like to expand their operation and put a paint booth in the building. With that, we will need an additional three-phase electric and air circulation system. They will also expand their lease square footage, and that'll add to additional revenue as well. Osprey would use this booth for filling and sealing of patterns, molds, plugs, tooling used for fabrication, and composite structures. Would also provide a cleaning station when using solvents, such as acetone. The booth would allow controlled use of spray or wipe-on chemicals that require ventilation. This capability is required for any composite shop that's working with thermoset resins, gel coats, paints, and other volatile chemicals. We also anticipate other tenants moving into the Smart Zone that would see this as a benefit. We have had this designed for the project, was put together by UP Engineers and Architects for quotes in three-phase electric and the return air ventilation system. Total investment will be approximately $20,000. The design and build has already been approved by the city building official, Steve Aikman. The Osprey has agreed to purchase the paint booth for just under $5,000. They will sign an MOU that they are willing and open to share the booth with other tenants, provided they have priority. They will provide maintenance and repairs, as well as the blower motor filter and replacements. Osprey will add 500 square feet to their lease, along with additional cost per square foot, and sign a longer-term lease. The EDC Board voted on February 12th to use Essex funds for this project. Essex Funds currently has a fund balance of $233,105, might vary a couple dollars there. The monthly interest earned is $400 a month, and this fund has, in the past, has been used for a revolving loan fund to attract new business, as well as incentive for job creation and manufacturing growth. So.
City Manager.
I appreciate the presentation by Director Holt. I know that since CDC has taken over the operations on a day-to-day basis of the Breeder Building, they've essentially been working to fill it, it's been filled for many of the months during their tenure of management, and they keep working at it, and certainly appreciate their efforts in that regard.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, let's go to Commissioner Talentino.
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion to establish a budget, the amount of $20,000, to put HVAC return air system and electrical back in the Smart Zone building, with funding provided by the EDC Essex Funds.
Support.
This move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you. We will keep you posted to all the good news.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Item three is from the Planning Commission, recommendation to approve the rezoning of the Mead &amp; Fowles addition lots 1 through 3, including the North-South Alley, Block 4, from Residential Reserve, RSV, to Industrial I-1.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, Community Development Director Freeman will present to the Commission.
Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. So the subject of this request is the old National Weather Service building on the west side of Davit, just north of West 14th Avenue. Most people are familiar with it. There's an approximately 2,000-square-foot office building that was constructed there in the early 1980s, and was operated by the National Weather Service until they left town in 1997. It hasn't really seen any use since then. Doing the math, it looks like it was empty eight years longer than it was actually used as of this year. Back in 2017, it was actually purchased by a private entity from the federal government, and that individual has an agreement with Dr. Lindsey Andajak, who intends to open a chiropractic office in that building. The federal ownership here is really an interesting twist, because they are not obligated to abide by any of our local zoning regulations. So the fact that this building was residentially zoned was of no consequence to them whatsoever. However, coming back into private ownership, zoning, once again, matters. Within the RSV zoning district, there are no commercial uses allowed, so you have an office building in a zoning district with no commercial uses. This is kind of a summary of the list of uses that are allowed in that zoning district. I can see none of them are really appropriate for that building or property. Here you can see an overview of the zoning map. The subject property is right here. This gray area is the airport industrial park. The red is the commercial uses along Ashman, and then the yellow is residential uses. Here's a closer look. This area that's RSV to the north is where the National Weather Service continues to maintain their instrumentation. They did not sell any of that property, so that will probably be there more or less in perpetuity. So the request before the Commission tonight is to rezone lots 1 through 3, including the North-South Alley, Block 4, Mead &amp; Fowles addition from RSV to I-1. So looking back at the zoning history of the property, it's been zoned residential district since zoning was established in the city in 1927, and between 1948 and 2017, it was either owned by the federal government or the city. So there's a very long-established history of public ownership of this piece of property. And based upon what I was able to find from looking at the old areas, the building that's there currently was the first structure ever placed on the property. The future land use map shows industrial future land use designation, so it's very much consistent with the requested I-1 zoning designation. Additionally, the master plan speaks to supporting the integration of small businesses, which provide convenient services in and near neighborhoods, in a way that fits the character, and something like a chiropractic office, which is a very low-traffic generator normally, seems to fit nicely with that. And additionally, it supports the City Commission's very recently adopted best practice of supporting increased business activity and job growth within the city. Certainly no use is forever, so looking at the industrial zoning requested, you have to think about what may follow a chiropractic office. This property is fairly small, at 4 tenths of an acre, so that will naturally limit what kinds of things can occur here in the future. Within the I-1 zoning district, it requires any and all uses to take place within a building or an enclosed fenced-in area, so the relatively small size is really gonna suppress any large incompatible uses from going here. So I have no issues with that. I received one phone call, and they were in support of this request. No opposition was communicated to me at any point. The Planning Commission considered this request at their meeting last week, on Thursday, and voted five to zero in favor, finding consistency with all of our relevant plans, documents, and goals. So the action before the City Commission tonight is recommended to be approved, the first reading the ordinance, and schedule a second reading for the March 18th regular City Commission meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. City Manager, anything additionally?
Nothing further. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you for your presentation, Kelly. I'm glad somebody's gonna do something with this property, it's been an eyesore for a long time. With that being said, I move to approve the included ordinance, rezoning Mead &amp; Fowles addition lots 1-3, including the North-South Alley, Block 4, from Residential Reserve, RSV, to Industrial I-1, and schedule a second reading for the March 18th, 2019, City Commission meeting.
Support.
This move's supported. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Thank you, Kelly. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item four is from Community Housing Network Incorporated, request for adoption of payment in lieu of tax ordinance proposed Malcolm Lofts project.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioners are aware, the Sioux Area Public Schools issued a request for proposals for the disposition of the Malcolm School Building and grounds located on West Bruce Street in the fall of 2018. In response to the RFP issued by Sioux Area Public Schools, Community Housing Network, based in Troy, Michigan, submitted the included response dated October 30, 2018. CHN has offered a purchase price of $400,000 to acquire the Malcolm School grounds in order to facilitate a development that would adaptively reuse the existing school building and construct new units on the surrounding property. Specifically, CHN is proposing to construct a total of 37 one- and two-bedroom units through a combination of housing tax credits and private equity investment. As noted within the included materials, CHN tentatively plans to create the housing for local workers and seniors, as to be determined through a market study to be initiated and completed by the developer. Following a November 12th City Commission work session on this matter, CHN and Sioux Area Public Schools negotiated further on the property transaction and reached an agreement on terms in December. Of note, it is the understanding of city administration that purchase agreement between the parties will provide CHN with an opportunity to secure low-income housing tax credits from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority through August. As Commissioners are aware, the city would need to adopt a payment in lieu of tax ordinance in support of the proposed development in order for CHN to be eligible to obtain these incentives from the state. It should be noted that the proposed use for the property would be entirely residential. On a closely related note, CHN has also confirmed that it has come to an agreement on terms for the acquisition of property situated on Ashman, which could be developed to include a commercial component, as well as possible market-rate residential housing. As noted by CHN during the November 12th work session, the development of this other property would be financially supported, at least in part, through CHN's proposed Malcolm School property development. A signed and notarized letter submitted by CHN on this matter has been included. A payment in lieu of tax ordinance has been drafted for consideration by the City Commission. The ordinance has been reviewed by both MISTDA and the city attorney, and would need to be adopted by the City Commission in order for CHN to be eligible to secure the tax credits from MISTDA. A proposed municipal services agreement has also been included for review. The MSA would require an annual payment in the amount of $7,000 directly from CHN to the city for the provision of services, and to partially recognize the administrative burden the city experiences for administering payment in lieu of tax structures. Each year following the initial payment, to the city, the amount included would increase at a fixed rate of 1%. The ordinance itself includes an ordinance-based municipal service charge equivalent to 7% of the annual shelter rents actually collected by the housing project during each operating year. The ordinance would remain in effect and would not terminate, as long as a mortgage loan remains outstanding and unpaid on the project, and the property remains subject to the income and rent restrictions established by MISTDA. The city attorney has also included a provision within the ordinance stating that it would be automatically repealed should the sponsor not commence site construction within three years of the effective date of the ordinance, should it be adopted. It is projected by CHN the city would generate revenue approximating $11,382 per annum between both the ordinance and the municipal services agreement. As Commissioners are aware, the first reading of the ordinance was approved during the February 18th regular meeting of the City Commission, and accordingly, CHN is requesting the ordinance be adopted by the City Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are three recommendations to the motion, and discussion with the city attorney, that can be, okay, that can be one motion, and Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, I just have a question for the city attorney. So, as this project moves forward, if it does come to completion, CHN has contracted KMG Prestige to assume the management responsibility of the property, of which my sister is an employee, and so I'm wondering if I should continue in the discussion and the vote?
Yes, you should.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baker?
I'd like to make a motion to adapt the payment in lieu of tax ordinance as presented, so they could all be up to...
Sure, all three.
Authorize the City Manager to execute the municipal services agreement as presented, as well as authorize the City Manager to execute the guarantee associated with the municipal services agreement as presented.
Support.
It's been moved supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
No.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item five from War Memorial Hospital, request for provision of 100 parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that Director Nepper was planning to present to the City Commission, and Mr. Kevin Calchuk with War Memorial Hospital is here tonight as well.
Okay. Justin, come on up. I was looking for you, I didn't see you back there behind our friend.
Good evening. We were trying to figure out who should talk first, but just to give the Commission a little bit of background, last fall, we hit a point with our parking gate system where it was completely inoperable, it'd been limping along for five or six years. The Commission approved the purchase of a new one, which was installed in December, and that gate system was something that the hospital supported, and based on their lease, at a 25% level, that was installed, and in January was our first month that we were able to generate our first billing to the hospital for their use. And our current hospital lease, which has gone back since the construction of the garage, was set up in a way that the hospital had agreed to pay for pretty much 25% of all costs associated with the garage, maintenance, capital investments, improvements, in order to receive 100 spaces, which equals approximately 25% of the garage's capacity. So, traditionally, we billed the hospital for every vehicle over that 25% threshold, which is 100 spaces, and we billed them at the hourly rate. So, for example, if there was 101 cars in the garage, in any given hour, my parking staff would generate a bill for that single hour for one car, and at the time, let's say, when the garage was first billed, it would be 50 cents. Last year, the Commission approved an increase, I think, to $1.25, and so now the hospital would pay $1.25 per space over 100. The new gate system allowed us to actually have an accurate report for the first time ever, well, close to ever, since I've been here, and at the same time, huge blizzard, a lot of people parked in the garage, and the hospital got hit with a pretty massive bill. There was up to 80 cars over the 100 level at any given time during the peak hours, and it generated, on top of the fact that we increased fees at the same time, pretty big bills. So, I met the hospital to make sure that we were being a good partner, and Mr. Calchuk came up with a proposal I think is fair, which is to look at an increase in the total number of vehicles to 200 instead of 100, in exchange for them purchasing 100, the value of 100 permits. So, just like if any given user, yourself or myself, would come to the parking department and purchase a permit at the current rate in the user fee schedule of $325, the proposal would be for them to pay the equivalent of 100 more permits to get that cap bumped up to 200, so that there's a little bit less variability for the hospital in knowing and budgeting going forward, and it does allow us at the parking department to generate increased revenues. And the third component, and kind of the negotiation and discussion, is that based on the kind of the drastic nature of the price hike based on the cars over 100 in January, the hospital would have to look at its use and regulate how many people were able to park in there. So, to me, it's a win-win for both organizations, and to amend the lease would be my recommendation to allow for up to 200 vehicles in exchange for the purchase of 100 permits. I don't know if Kevin would like to add anything at the Commission's...
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
All right, good evening, thank you. First of all, Justin, you know, was, is a good partner, he came over right away after he found out the accuracy of the parking and so forth, and shocked us very kindly. Anyways, just a little bit of history, I know you know about the parking structure, of course, but just to give you, put into perspective what those 100 parking spots cost us, we've invested well over $2 million to connect the parking structure to the medical office building. I recall, when I was, when I started the hospital in 2004, I was requested to provide information as to what the growth potential would be of the parking structure and so forth. At that time, we had over 400, about 400 employees for War Memorial Hospital. At this point, we have over 900, so we have a definite impact to the city of Sault Ste. Marie. But if you put in the payments into perspective of what we pay, leave it alone the $2 million that we've invested in the connection, and the safe passage, and a climate-controlled environment for our community members, we pay as our portion, as we've agreed to, well over $100,000 easily. That equates to $1,000 per spot already. To limit our employees or the public as they seek services for health care, I think would be, it would be in the best interest of both the city and the hospital to really think through that. I did propose that to Justin and Oliver, and I believe, Oliver, if I may, that you feel that we might be better off to take that type of proposal that we discussed, but limit it to a six-month period, and then reassess it from a hospital and commission perspective. So, I am in support of looking at a six-month window from January 1st through June 30th, where we would pay the 100 spots, increasing our level of parking up to 200, and give us more time, rather than acting so quickly, it would give the time of both the hospital, Justin and his staff, and the Commission to reassess it, but at this point, really go from January 1st through June 30th to determine a longer-term solution.
Any questions of Kevin? Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. Just more, just a couple of questions that I received as a Commissioner from people out in the community, and just so that you can, we can put it into different terms, because some people have said there's not enough space in the parking garage to give them 100 more spaces, but the 100 more spaces are already currently being occupied, and it's not that they're marked-out spaces, correct? It's just allowing you the availability of having more patients and employees under the same kind of rate that we give you. So, it's not like you're gonna be encompassing anything more than you've been currently encompassing, and there's plenty of space within the parking garage for everybody.
Yes, I believe so, and just to add to that a little bit, we currently provide parking and try to, over the years, we've really tried to direct our employees to utilize the structure in support of it, to show access and so forth. So, no, we do not foresee any additional usage than we already are incurring, and in fact, we also, as part of that, is that the hospital validates all patients when they present to the hospital as part of those parking spots. And in addition, it plays a very vital part of our valet parking service as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Manager, do you have anything additionally?
Just that I appreciate Mr. Calchuk coming to the City Commission tonight, and as he mentioned, the agreement is transitional in nature. There is one month's worth of information from the new mechanism, and I think both parties would benefit from having more time to assess the information as it comes in prior to any long-term decisions being agreed upon.
So, we're really requesting, again, the January 1st through June 30th for that transitional period?
Okay. Commissioner Gary?
It's kind of a long motion. I make a motion to direct city administration to develop and enter into a time-limited amendment to the existing lease agreement with War Memorial Hospital on the parking deck, in order to accept payment for 100 additional parking spaces beyond the amount detailed in the existing agreement, to be provided to War Memorial Hospital for the time period of January 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2019, for a payment by War Memorial Hospital to the city of $18,000, and for this matter to be returned to the City Commission for future consideration for future periods of parking deck utilization by War Memorial Hospital.
Support.
It's been moved supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, we're into item G, the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one, under the City Manager's report, would provide approval for modifications to the International Bridge Service. As Commissioners are aware, administration has been working with Community Action Agency and the International Bridge Administration over the past 12 to 15 months to maximize the impact of the International Bridge Bus. The city, IBA, and MDOT have each contributed an annual cash subsidy to support this service, ranging from just under $15,000 in 2012 to just over $17,000 in 2015. In fiscal year 17, the total expense for operating the service was almost $127,000, funded through cash subsidies of the partners, state sources, federal sources, and rider fares. In addition to these sources, International Bridge Administration also authorizes the bridge bus to cross, free of charge, at a value of roughly $50,000 per annum. These contributions are significant commitments made to join the twin Sues through reliable transportation service, with the potential to benefit residents and stakeholders in both communities. Despite earnest efforts to maximize the impact of the bridge bus, figures for fiscal year 18 showed a further drop in ridership, in total dropping by 23% between fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 17. Figures from fiscal year 18 also demonstrate a decrease from fiscal year 17 itself. In total, ridership between fiscal year 13 and 18 has dropped by roughly 41.7%. Looking back further, it should be noted that ridership in fiscal year 2008 was just over 7,000, representing a decrease of almost 56% since that time. It is clear that the operating model for the bridge bus requires modification to a more cost-effective and logical structure. Following a close examination, the partners are proposing the following changes to the existing model. The future procurement and use of vans rather than buses, which would decrease the value of tolls waived by the Bridge Administration from the current level of roughly $50,000 per year to just under $15,000 per year, while almost certainly generating savings on vehicle maintenance, fuel, and other operational needs. The restructuring of the existing 12-hour service, which runs from 7:00 to 7:00, to an eight-hour service running from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM between Monday and Friday, which would reduce operating costs by an estimated $40,000 per year. Further, by eliminating Saturday service, which would reduce operating costs by an estimated $16,000 per year, and renaming the model to the International Bridge Service as the use of buses would be phased out. As a result of the proposed changes, it is projected that roughly $56,000 in cash costs and $40,000 in subsidized tolls would be eliminated. As noted within the included memorandum prepared by Community Action Agency Transportation Director Anita Benson, during the 18 fiscal year, only 307 individuals rode the bus after 4:00 PM. On many days, no one rode the bus after 4:00 PM. Similarly, a total of 412 people rode the bus on Saturdays during the 18 fiscal year, averaging out to seven riders each Saturday. This includes a number of Saturdays for which total ridership did not exceed two persons. As Commissioners are aware, the subsidy for each rider trip for fiscal year 18 was an estimated $57 per rider per trip, which was an increase from fiscal year 17. Such modifications would represent an earnest effort to continue the delivery of the service in a cost-effective manner, which reduces the existing level of subsidization. It's important to emphasize these changes represent a natural evolution in how the service is delivered within the context of local transportation. Given the extent of the proposed changes to this service, a 30-day comment period was established by the City Commission on January 14th in order to receive public feedback regarding the same. In an effort to maximize the voice of the public in this process, Community Action Agency provided notices of possible changes in all of the buses, at all of the bus stops, and to a number of public entities. An article was also published by the Sioux News. In total, one person called Community Action expressing concerns about the changes, and one person called Community Action voicing support for the changes. Conversations with Community Action employees and agencies did indicate a possible interest in Saturday runs, possibly during the summer months, but this could also be evaluated in the future, depending upon the viability financially of such an operation. Minimal concern was expressed during these conversations about the elimination of service... between four and seven PM. Should any such modifications be made to the service, it would be the recommendation of administration that become effective on April first in order to provide further notification to the public and to initiate changes at the halfway point for the federal 2019 fiscal year. In closing, it should be noted that the project partners will continue to evaluate the service for future improvements and overall viability. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the city commission approve the proposed modifications to the existing bridge service model as presented to become effective on April first in order to begin using vans instead of buses, restructuring the existing twelve-hour service to an eight-hour service, and eliminating Saturday service while renaming the operation to the International Bridge Service. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, I just have another question for the city attorney.
Okay.
I sit on the board of directors for the Community Action Agency, who oversees the budget for Dial-A-Ride. I'm wondering if I should abstain from discussion.
That is correct. You should.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Motion to approve the city manager's recommendation.
Support.
The move supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
And before closing the city manager's report, I would just like to recognize Deputy City Manager Troyer for being recently named by Secretary of State Benson to the Election Modernization Advisory Committee. This is an appointment to an advisory committee which will advise the state of Michigan and the state's Bureau of Elections on the implementation of Proposal Three, Further Election Reforms, the launch of the online voter registration system passed last year, poll worker training, and other solutions to current challenges involving elections. Certainly, congratulations on that appointment.
On behalf of the commission, certainly, that same congratulations.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item H is a status report. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The first status report is an update on the Community Rental Registration Survey, and would welcome back Director Freeman.
Okay.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. So we're on track for a release right around the middle of the month. We had some logistical setbacks we've been working out the last few weeks, but hopefully smooth sailing ahead. I will be using Survey Monkey, which is an online survey tool. I will also have paper copies available for those who do not have access to the internet or otherwise don't feel comfortable using a computer to take the survey. We'll have three main methods of outreach. One will be via the city's Facebook page. Another will be a direct mailer to all the registered landlords within the city. And then our third will be utilizing the post offices' Every Door Direct Mailer Program, which is the first time we've done that. Basically, what they will do is working with us and Sioux Printing. A postcard will land in every mailbox on all of our chosen routes, so we can blanket. Citywide, there'll be about, little over seven thousand of those going out, and we'll have a link to the online survey going with those. One of the challenges that we had to try to confront was that our mailing information does not include, you know, sub-information like apartments or unit numbers. So obviously, reaching rental tenants is a key aspect of this program. Additionally, Lake State students are back from spring break as of today, so they'll all be in town, and they'll all be here to get those mailers when they go out. Sioux Printing actually sent us a proof just after five o'clock today, so things are moving along quite briskly. Hopefully, the closure deadline will be the end of March, and if not, we can push it back a little bit into April, but certainly, as that closes and we start to analyze the data, we'll get that information to you as promptly as we can.
Any questions of Kelly? City manager?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kelly.
The second item under status reports is an update regarding the MEDC, Community Development Block Grant Facade Improvement Project. On this matter, Director Nupper will provide the update to the commission.
Okay. Justin?
Okay. Had a lot of different votes and discussion about all the different projects that we're working on. We just finally received our authorized grant from the MEDC for the rehabilitation of the Arstrom Pharmacy Building on the corner of Spruce and Ashman, the Alpha Bar, and the McClellan property at 411 West Portage, which used to be Cool's Coffee. A lot of people remember as that. Those three buildings will be starting construction if everything goes according to plan in the spring, as soon as the snow melts. We're working on getting our contractors lined up, getting contracts signed, and the funding that will be from the private property owners, the fifty percent matches, will be placed in escrow with the city soon. So pretty much, I'm just waiting for them to kind of get the contract signed and everything so they don't have to pay a lot of interest on their loans until the project is ready to start. And then, just for the commission's understanding, we pay the fifty percent that state's funding, in general, we, we pay that to the contractors as bills come in, and then we're reimbursed from the state every thirty days or so. So that'll be, probably, all that construction will be happening over the next course, course of the next year. So that's exciting, and I'm really looking forward to see some, some demolition happening and stuff going on as soon as the snow melts. Would you like me to roll right into the next?
Any questions of the, okay, moving on.
Okay. So it kind of segues into new applications. The state of Michigan, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation has, we have a new community assistance team person that, that I work with and other people, Josh Billington here, and Lindsay Miller is that person. She's based out of Sheboygan. She covers Chippewa County, Luce, Mackinac, and a couple down in the northern lower, and she is on my case to find new projects. The state is sitting on a fair amount of money, it appears, mostly through the CDBG Fund. The Housing and Urban Development Department in Washington DC gives the state of Michigan a certain amount of money that is used specifically for projects in communities with less than fifty thousand population. So we compete for that, that funding from any other communities that meet specific regulations, usually based on low to moderate income levels, and that's what our downtown is certified as, is having low to moderate income. And so I am working right now with, on a number of projects. We probably have eight or nine new projects in downtown that are kind of in the pipeline. The Sioux Theater is one of the biggest ones that we've been working on for years, but we're getting closer and closer to rehabbing the theater. Gym 906 is working on a project right now, looking at redoing the exterior of their building, and probably another twenty buildings are kind of kicking around the idea of figuring out how much they can afford. So I wanted to make sure that the public is aware, the commission is aware, if you know people that are interested in rehabilitating their buildings, we have access to funding that's not just facades, it can be, not just exteriors, it can be exterior, interior, any combination. They'll kind of do custom packages of funding that is generally not tied to any sort of restrictions, as long as it's a historic building that's getting rehabbed in, in the appropriate way. So that's something that I'm working on. The one thing that I wanted to bring up to the commissions for, for, for us to think about and brainstorm on, and I've actually only sort of talked to the city manager about this, is the requirement for a municipal match or, or a local government match, and that's one of the biggest challenges that we have, and we've gotten kind of very creative over the years, based on what our past, when we get these grants in the past. For example, the match for Alpha Bar, Arstrom's, and the McClellan property we used was a forty thousand dollar budget that the city commission set aside for sidewalk repairs that was not directly related to the, the grants. It was just to fix sidewalks all throughout the, the city. Just so happened that many of the sidewalks were in need of repair around those three buildings, so we were able to leverage that as a local match. So my office and the city manager's office, where, and anybody else involved, I think we're always looking at ways where we can make sure that the city is not having to come up with necessarily a cash match, just because we don't necessarily have that luxury all the time. And the Downtown Development Authority and other communities would probably have that ability where they would offer a cash match. So that's something I'm really trying to figure out, is how to make sure that we're looking at ways to either set up a small fund or some sort of in-kind deals or any sort of way that we can have a local incentive, because the state loves to say, if we're putting skin in the game, and the private property owners putting skin in the game, the city better put skin in the game, and, or the DDA or whatever the agency is. So that really is something that I hope we, we can think about as we go forward if we want to see continued state support, how we can come up with some sort of local support for these projects. So that's my, that's my update. I appreciate it.
Here's a good question, and some of that skin in the game, can we go back over past practices, like the streetscape, the millions of dollars, the amount of money the city put into downtown area has been?
We, we, we're trying our best to make sure that we're using, you know, making those cases for our, our properties. There's a lot of options coming up. For example, a good one that we just thought of that I'll have to get, get permission from my board for, but there's a property that, well, actually, for the 722 and 724 Ashman projects that CHN is working on, the one wall has a huge, you know, as you're driving northbound, you can see the Pickett Door Cleaners mural on the right side, the other side is really rough, and we just so happen to have a little bit of cash left from our mural project a few years ago that's been sitting in account, we're trying to figure out what to do with. So, so that one, we'll be able to tell the state, you know, should the DDA board approve it, that we can put a little bit of that left over to put a mural on that wall as well, if the property owner and the developer would like us to do that. But if they're looking at applying for any sort of MEDC funds for that project, you know, the Gym 906 project, we're looking at how to partner with some of the mini park space nearby. There's a lot of ways to, to work it where it doesn't have to be a financial match, but anything that we can do to be creative on how to help our local property owners with their applications will be appreciated, so.
Another, just another comment, because I, you hear this, you know, you get a state bureaucrat sit behind a desk that doesn't know Sault Ste. Marie from some other, other place, and they always talk about what's the city done for, for the property type of thing. And we sitting here, and certainly the property owners will know, so I think it's okay to make those kind of suggestions, and, and, but when they sit behind a desk and they don't know our community, I think it's important that we talk to our legislators too, because that should be flexible.
I completely agree.
Because over the years, you know, there's, there's been a lot of money spent in, in the downtown area in, in infrastructure improvements and stuff, and that's all taxpayer money, too. I mean, we don't, we don't make money, we spend taxpayers' money, so they, I think they have to be very reasonable on, the facade restoration program's a great program. I would hate to see it be crippled, because a community couldn't come up with, or couldn't remember a share that they did way back, you know, five years ago or eight, ten years ago.
And actually, I think, just as you mentioned that, I think, based on our goal-setting review that the city manager made, many of those investments, I think we can use as, as leverage. You know, if we figure out public restrooms in the next couple of years, that'll be a huge way to demonstrate a, a match, even though it's not directly to a specific property. It benefits the whole, the whole area, and we can make, you know, even, even the, the New Year's Eve, you know, even that could be something where we can potentially make, make a pitch. So, so I, I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, there was some transparency there and that we were looking at ways to make that happen, not, not trying to get anybody worried about it. I think we're, we're in good shape, but.
No, just make sure you jump harder.
Little, little bit sometimes.
And that's, anyway. Commissioner Twardy?
I was just going to say that we, that's one of the reasons we need to keep on our legislative priorities, how revenue and constitutional and statutory revenue sharing continues to be like so vitally important, because if we don't have enough money to do anything else in the city, how can we, you know, add, add money to these CDBG programs? So, yeah.
Anyone else? City manager? Thank you, Justin.
Appreciate the director's updates, and I know that these programs are very labor-intensive and appreciate his efforts in that area. And that concludes the status report section of the agenda. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. I as, I as matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience like to make a comment at this time? Chief?
Thank you. Before I get started, has anybody noticed the increased amount of snow we got over this year? Okay, sorry, bad joke. Yeah, too soon. With the accumulated snowfall totals being what they are, mixed with periods of freezing rain, a number of concerns have been raised and may present several hazards to residents, building owners, and the managers of commercial structures. The first concern of snow and rain precipitation comes in the form of weight. Already this calendar year, there have been six reported collapses in Chippewa County. The dead weight of excessive snow and ice accumulation on rooftops of all structures, whether it's a house, a commercial structure, et cetera, puts a, a structure at risk of collapse. Very simple. I strongly encourage all who rent, own, or manage structures in our area to consider clearing off rooftops. Due to the timing of freezing, freezing rain, as, you know, between the snowfalls that we had, many roofs in the past would automatically just, the, the snow load would slide off at some point. Chances are, we're not going to see that this year, again, just because of the timing of freezing rain, that the, the weight on the, on the roof is, is going to stay there. And I hate to mention this, but we still have a decent amount of winter left, so the chances of, the chances of, of more snow, snow accumulation is possible. Obviously, mitigating a building collapse from a rescue standpoint is a very long and dangerous process, so we want to prevent that as best as we can. So definitely take a look at your roof and, you know, make the decision whether or not it needs to be cleaned up. There's plenty of help in town, whether it's advertised or not, to, to help that out. My second concern, which came up recently, centers around the amount of snowfall on the ground. As you may have heard, many notices have gone out, they're on the radio or whatnot, recently reminding folks to clear out around their furnace or boiler vent pipes. Vent pipes, which are designed to either intake fresh air or exhaust waste gases, may become plugged due to rising snow accumulation, and if not maintained, can cause dangerous and deadly gases, such as carbon monoxide, to accumulate within, within the home, within the structure. Clearing of such vent pipes may prevent undetectable hazards. You know, in most cases nowadays, people have carbon monoxide detectors, but amazingly enough, there's quite a few that don't. So carbon monoxide is odorless, is tasteless and whatnot, so it's, it can be very deadly. Third, two significant hazards around both residential and commercial gas meters. First, gas meters have vents which need to be kept clear of accumulating snow. Take caution when clearing around meters so that none of the equipment is damaged. Second, snow and ice-covered meters potentially present hazards to people plowing or otherwise removing snow from driveways or other areas. Although meter strikes can be common in such snowy conditions, gas leaks from meter strikes can be prevented very simply by marking the gas meter's location. And probably in the last three weeks, doing some statistics today, we've had seven gas meter strikes, so they can all be prevented. Lastly, I apologize for my long report, but lastly, daylight savings time begins on March tenth, this Sunday, at two, two AM. As a general rule, fire departments across the US remind residents to change the batteries, not only in their smoke detector, but also in their carbon monoxide alarm in their homes and apartments. While changing your detector batteries, we also encourage checking the expiration date of your detector. Yes, there's an expiration date on most, on the back, and if it's past the date, there's a good chance that your detector is going to malfunction or just not function at all. So if you're unsure when a detector has been replaced, it may be time to buy a new one. Smoking carbon monoxide detectors lose their ability to detect over time. And also, hardwired smoke detectors also have a battery backup in them, so just simply saying, oh, it's hardwired, still, still a battery in there to be checked, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go on to item J, matters presented by the city commission. Just a couple of things, certainly like to thank Mr. Pete Pattenan, International Bridge Director, for being here and sitting through the, the meeting. Certainly nice to see you, and good luck with the International Bridge. Also, just a, a comment on snow removal. Normally, the city manager would, would make the comment, but we're really familiar with what's going on, so we know there's two man, two twelve-person crews working twenty-four, seven, continuing its It's been, it's been a number of weeks. When it's not snowing, they're removing snow. And as you can see from the south side, they haven't had it complete yet. So that they continue to move snow, and we've got dump areas where they're putting the snow. But the crews are doing an exceptional job, working 24/7. As I said, two crews, 12, 12-person crews. So we know it's a tedious process, and the less snow we get now, the better off we're going to be, but no guarantees. So be safe out there. But ultimately, when we lost the antennas on cars, we could no longer put the orange ball on them. And all the new cars have that little thing in the middle of the back window or just above the back window, which isn't very high. So just, just drive cautiously. There are still many, many roads that, or streets in the community, that two cars cannot get down at the same time when there's parking on the street. So just be very careful. And thanks for those words, Scott Labonte. Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, kind of going off of giving a shout-out to the street department. There was one area of concern over the last couple of weeks that I really wanted to thank the street department for. I had a couple of residents from the Avery Center who came down to my store a couple of weeks ago. And after, if you're not familiar, the two buildings between Community Action Agency and the Avery Center, the brick pavers there are heated. And so it's usually very clear, but with all the snow that we've had, that put the Oka Street snow up very, very high. And we know that all the senior citizens and the handicapped people live at the Avery Center. And so as the snow continued to pile up, there was literally about a 12- to 14-inch drop between the alleyway and those bare brick pavers. And so when these residents came in, I immediately called Oliver, and he forwarded the concern to Eric Fountain. They were out there that night, and they had scraped down the alleyway so that you could easily transmission from the alleyway down to those bare brick pavers. So I just want to say, great job to those guys there. You know, we've got to make sure that those senior citizens are safe getting around there. It is an area of focus that I think that we need to concentrate on, so. Good job.
Anyone else? Commissioner Gary?
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Support.
The move's supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.